Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, and welcome to our public work session. Before we get started, and I will ask the Madam Clerk to call the role, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes, Mr. Battle, Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before I proceed to give the floor to our city manager, I want to take a moment to recognize our newly elected council members, Councilman-elect Mark Hugel and Councilman-elect Vernon Tillage. And welcome back, Councilman Bill Moody. Madam City Manager, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Greetings, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes in his absence, members of Portsmouth City Council, Councilmen-elect, and the Portsmouth family. Our opening presentation tonight will be by Mr. Chris Gullickson from the Virginia Port Authority. He's the Director of Development and Transportation, and he will provide an overview of the Wild Duck Lane project. This presentation will assist you in your discussion during closed session. Mr. Gullickson, thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, City Manager Chapman. I appreciate that. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Glover, and the entire Portsmouth City Council. Again, my name is Chris Gullickson, and I'm Director of Development and Transportation Policy at the Port of Virginia. My business address is 101 West Main Street, Norfolk, Virginia. Again, I want to thank you for this opportunity to come before you and discuss the opportunity that we have at Wild Duck Lane. First, I just want to take a step back and think about the last five years. The Port of Virginia has invested close to $1 billion of on-terminal expansion and optimization, as well as dredging. And in fact, we're currently investing upwards of another billion dollars over the next 36 months to optimize NIT and also finish the Hampton Roads Harbor deepening and widening project, which will bring our port, the Port of Virginia here in Portsmouth, to have the deepest and widest channels on the U.S. East Coast. You know, back in July of 2019, the Port of Virginia completed a $330 million expansion of Virginia International Gateway, which you see there on the screen before you. The expansion has resulted in significant increases in our ability to handle more volume, as well as moving cargo efficiently and fluidly through our port. In fact, Virginia National Gateway today can handle over 2 million TEUs annually. This is one of the most advanced semi-automated container handling facilities, really, in North America and really considered globally as a real efficient and a gem. And it's a real gem for the city of Portsmouth. These last few years have obviously been unprecedented, and we have experienced turmoil and challenges, and that's very apparent everywhere in our lives. It's also apparent in the global supply chain, and we experienced that. But looking back, by September of 2020, the Port of Virginia had begun to see container volumes recover, and we started seeing that growth come back. And actually, fiscal year 2021 was one of our best years ever, 3-point million TEUs. We grew by 16%. Fiscal year 2022, up again. We grew 16%, 3.7 million TEUs. And as I stand here in November, we're up fiscal year-to-date in '23, we're up about 2.1%. Now, this growth is not only attributed to the strength of the economic recovery that's taken place coming out of COVID, but it's also a testament to the previous investments made to increase our on-terminal throughput handling capacity and efficiency. And as the port grows, the Port of Virginia continues to capture new business and market share. Companies are beginning to shift their supply chains to enjoy the efficiencies and advantages here in Virginia and obviously in Portsmouth. This also has driven significant outside-the-gate investment. And we've actually coined this new investment that's come to Virginia, in particular into Portsmouth. We're calling it "port-centric development." You know, I look back over the past five years, Portsmouth has really seen some really significant outside-the-gate industrial developments. So I think of interchange development out there on Elmhurst Lane, that's about a 200,000-square-foot building, or the $84 million that Lineage Logistics invested there in Port Norfolk to develop what is an advanced cold storage warehouse facility. You know, Portsmouth has a proven record of accomplishing and attracting these critical operations to support the supply chain, which brings us to Wild Duck Lane and the opportunity for Portsmouth with IRG. In 2015, Cogentrix closed the coal-fired power plant located at the site there at Wild Duck Lane, circled in yellow. Subsequently, the port was provided an opportunity to acquire that asset. In working with the city to align and aligning our economic development efforts, and also to enhance the economic benefit of the port to the city, it was decided that attracting an outside private industrial developer to the site was a preferred route, an attempt to bring this property, Wild Duck Lane, back into a higher and greater use. A headwind that a lot of port host localities face is the lack of developable greenfield real estate. In fact, in most cases, most new development within our port host localities, like Portsmouth, are redevelopments. And in fact, the port, working with the General Assembly, it was enacted back in 2019, the Port Host Communities Revitalization Fund. This particular fund has really been a tremendous benefit for all port host localities, but truly, it's the city of Portsmouth that has been one of the communities, year over year, submitting successful applications to this fund to allow for this redevelopment of these older industrial sites to bring new sites back into production. And in fact, this particular fund was part of the package for IRG at Wild Duck Lane, and it really helped fund the removal of what was, you know, a shuttered coal-fired power plant. You know, the Port of Virginia and the city of Portsmouth are partners. In fact, we're so proud that we have over 250 employees at the port that call Portsmouth home. We're working daily with the city's Department of Economic Development on a variety of initiatives, but that is to bring investment and jobs here to the city of Portsmouth. We're actively engaged in organizations like community and schools. And then just recently, we're working with TCC to help stand up a new workforce training program that'll focus on supply-chain jobs here in the city. So really, the port and the city of Portsmouth, we are partners in these efforts, and that's why I've come before you today in support and excitement of activating what is the closest piece of land you could really find next to what is a premier container handling facility that is proving itself today and is going to grow for years to come. There's an opportunity here for the city of Portsmouth and for its residents. So again, I really want to appreciate for this time and consideration that each member of council has taken over these past few weeks as we've presented this opportunity. And now I'm going to go ahead and hand the presentation over to Mr. Grady Palmer, who is the representative for IRG. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Palmer, so you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Glover. Members of city council, my name is Grady Palmer. My business address is 999 Waterside Drive in the city of Norfolk. And I just want to take a few minutes just to explain to you why we're here, what this process is from a perspective of IRG, and just to take a minute to just run through some of the benefits of the project to the city of Portsmouth. Normally, planning commission items come to the council for a final vote. It's a little unusual, CBPA items, which this is a CBPA exception application that was filed with the planning commission. The planning commission is the final deciding body on matters that are related to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. So when items are approved or denied, it has to be appealed by code to the Circuit Court. And so it's a little bit of an unusual process, but we use the process that's outlined in the code to get the matter back before this body for ultimate decision, which is consistent with how you normally handle planning items. So while it's a little unusual, and your city attorney can explain in more detail, I just wanted to just say that we selected this as an opportunity to come before the council, to make our case, and hopefully find resolution. Now, IRG, you've heard a little bit about them, but they want, that's somebody that you should want doing business in Portsmouth. They've done a lot of really spectacular projects around the country. They tend to take projects on, like demolition of the coal-fired power plant. They've done that in other places in California in particular, where really difficult redevelopment projects that need to happen, IRG has delivered those projects for the host locality. So just a little bit about if this project were to be approved by the city council, IRG would use a general contractor by the name of ARCO. And I don't know that ARCO's done much work in Portsmouth, but they are a national general contractor. They have a strong commitment to supplier diversity. They actually hired a director of supplier diversity. And I just want to give you an example from a project in Philadelphia of what ARCO, working with IRG, would deliver in Portsmouth. So the ARCO project, the ARCO IRG project in Philadelphia had several goals established for minority-owned construction subcontracts, minority-owned professional services provider, and women-owned subcontractors and women-owned professional services. And so those goals that were set out and met in Philadelphia are 50% of all subcontract, construction subcontract, were 50% minority-owned, and 50% of all professional services that were provided in the Philadelphia project were 50% minority-owned. And 5% to 8% of all construction subcontract were women-owned, and 5% to 8% were professional services. And so ARCO and IRG have a strong commitment to minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses, and that's really displayed in this director of supplier diversity setting these goals for individual projects. And that was done in Philadelphia, and I will stand here tonight to tell you that that will be the case in Portsmouth. So just a little bit about the plan of development. The site was purchased by IRG, and it's circled there in yellow, with the intent to redevelop it from the shuttered coal-fired power plant to the plan that you have in front of you tonight, which is a 72,000-square-foot cross-dock trucking facility with associated trailer parking, and really to support port operations. And so a lot of the empty trailers will go from the port to this facility instead of being trucked out to Suffolk or some other location west. Instead, those empty trailers can be parked here, having, I think, a real environmental benefit as well. $6 million has been invested by IRG in redeveloping this process. As you know, you know, it is a process. It takes time to redevelop. It was a very difficult and expensive process to demolish the coal-fired power plant. That was a good thing for the city of Portsmouth and for the people and residents that live around the coal-fired power plant. Site is zoned for heavy industry. It's historically been an industrial site that's mostly compacted gravel and concrete, and in our view, mostly impervious surfaces. So right now, rain hits the surface. You can kind of see it's all kind of hard-packed surfaces, runs right into the bay. This proposal that's in front of you tonight will, if it were to be approved, would introduce important stormwater management for nutrient loads, for water quality improvements. And so while the site would be developed for heavy industry, it would come with significant upgrades for stormwater quality in the Chesapeake Bay. Now, when the item was presented to the planning commission, it was presented with two recommendations. It had a staff recommendation for denial, and then it had an alternative recommendation, that if the planning commission saw fit to approve, it had the staff recommended five conditions. And so what we have presented to you tonight is a resolution of the appeal of the planning commission's denial that would take into consideration the staff recommended alternative stipulations. And so we've taken what the staff has recommended and essentially put that into a settlement agreement that we would abide by. And so we think it's within a framework that's recognizable or should be recognizable by the city and should be something that you should find comfortable, that it's coming from your city staff. This proposal would preserve local taxing authorities, you heard, from Mr. Gullickson, over the property, would result in significant water quality measures to protect the bay compared to current conditions that you see there on the screen. In closing, this would be a settlement of an appeal to the Circuit Court, would allow the project to go forward as presented. And I think it's also important to note that this would be specific only to the Wild Duck Lane property. It wouldn't affect any other properties. This would just be specific to Wild Duck Lane. And so with that, I thank you for the time, certainly here for any questions that you have. I'm here also supported by the engineers from Kemley Horn, who prepared the CBPA exception application. They know a lot of information about the site, about the current conditions, the former conditions, and what's proposed on the site. So if there's any technical questions that you have tonight, we can handle those as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? I did have a couple of questions, Mr. Palmer. And Madam Clerk, I don't see our planning or someone from planning here.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for that question. This currently is a matter of a litigation.
Okay.
And we have requested that our planning division not be present to avoid any issue with that litigation.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification. So, sir, my question is twofold. Number one, what else, based on your knowledge, can go in this property, on this property? What other use can it be used for? Is it...
Well, it is zoned for heavy industry.
Correct.
So this is exactly what it's zoned for, is this cross-dock facility. So the proposed use matches up perfectly with the zoning. Now, of course, there are other permitted uses that your zoning ordinance would allow on the site. So, I mean, so whatever the list of permitted uses are, those could certainly go there. It's certainly conceivable. But I think what's ideal is the fact that this is a port-related project. That's really what ties the two things together, that this is a port-related cross-dock facility immediately adjacent to your, to the gateway site there with the port. So it's really a perfect match.
Very good. So the second question is then, will this be a tax-producing company? Will this be a tax-producing project for the city of Portsmouth?
Yes, it will be. IRG will make an investment of approximately $20 million into the site, and they estimate that they will create 100 jobs, over 100 jobs post-construction. So it will be a taxable property to the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Is it Palmer?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Palmer. The process that you mentioned, the staff, there was a staff recommendation at the planning level of denial. Why was it denied at that level?
So there was a bit of a disagreement between our folks on our side and the city staff. We took the position that it was redevelopment, and redevelopment is permitted by right if you don't increase impervious surfaces. Now, the staff recommended position was that since the coal-fired power plant was demolished in 2020, and our plan did not move forward until 2022, there was a two-year gap between the demolition and the time that our plans moved forward, and that essentially lost the status of redevelopment. And so then it was converted to an exception, what's called an exception application. And an exception application is essentially a variance to the regulations, to the CBPA regulations, and are very difficult to meet those regulations on the exception. But we felt that it was a redevelopment, and it has historically been an industrial site. We believe that it was redevelopment, which would not require an exception to be approved. And so it was a little bit of a disagreement, understand where staff's coming from. Staff said, well, we're going to, we see it as new development. So it's new, since it's new development, it has to go through the exception process. And so they went through that process with the staff recommendation for denial. Most things are recommended for denial that go through the exception process.
Okay. So it's an issue of linguistics, whether it's redevelopment versus new development?
In my opinion, it was, yes.
Right. And so those conditions that the staff recommended, those conditions were forwarded to the planning commission?
They were as an alternative recommendation. So your staff report had the first recommendation, and then had, in the event the planning commission were to see fit to approve, the staff recommended five conditions.
Right. And so the planning commission denied it. And so now you're here before council, asking that we allow for the project to go forward based on those conditions that the staff recommended. Those, you said, five conditions?
That's correct. Those five conditions.
Okay. And the tax implications of that would be what?
Well, so the port has always seen, I mean, just given the proximity to the port, it was a natural decision for the port to purchase this property. And the port, you know, held off buying this property in order to try to attract private investment that would be taxable to the city. And so that's exactly what this proposal would be. It's a private developer, private ownership, private investment that would be taxable to the city.
Okay. And so if it's not approved, then the port could move forward and develop it itself, and therefore then the city would not have any type of tax and jurisdiction over it?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other issue IRG raised pertained to some past projects that IRG has been involved in. One of the major things that I have always been concerned with is the minority contracting piece. One of those five conditions, did any of them involve holding IRG to some type of minority contracting standard?
No. Those five conditions were CBPA conditions.
Okay. And so would IRG be amenable to having, considering you said the past success, versus it just being a goodwill gesture? Would you be amenable to put in that language as part of the conditions?
Well, I think we would need to work out with your city attorney what the exact language is. But just to be clear, IRG hires a general contractor to come in, and the general contractor comes in and hires the subcontractors and the professional services. And so what I read to you about the Philadelphia experience was that was the general contractor program to deliver a percentage of minority-owned and women-owned services.
Right. But you mentioned it within the context of this presentation.
That's right.
I guess you mentioned it for us to consider and see IRG in a positive light.
Well, it's important to IRG, and it's important to ARCO as well. You know, so that's why it's being mentioned tonight, because it's important to both of those organizations, that the council be aware that there is a significant commitment.
Right. So as far as conditions, since it has a past history of that, would it be committed to continuing that with this project, with that being a condition?
Well, the answer is yes. I just would need to work with your city attorney to work out the language of that, because, you know, based on the availability, I mean, that's always a big issue, particularly these days, is the availability of qualified businesses and subcontractors. But they are committed to minority-owned and women-owned businesses. So that, without a doubt, that commitment's there. We just have to work out the language on what availability, and if there isn't the availability of qualified service providers, then, you know, that's a big issue for us.
Right. And our deliberation in looking at this, are you able to provide some disaggregated data on the past participation of minority contractors? Because you're using the term minority and 50%, but can you disaggregate that out as to what that minority represents? Not tonight, but I meant when...
Yes, we can do that.
Could you provide that information to the city manager?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Palmer, thank you for the presentation. My question is, at the time that the Wild Duck Lane property was acquired by IRG or ARCO, did they know or understand that there was a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act restrictions or guidelines that needed to be handled?
They did. Yes, they certainly did. I think what was not fully understood was this gap in time that would lead to the loss of the redevelopment status. So that was, that they were not aware of. I mean, otherwise, what would have happened is they would have just waited to demolish the building, and we wouldn't be here tonight. So if they had waited to demolish the building until 2022, we would have submitted plans to build the facility. It would have been considered redevelopment, and we wouldn't be here. But since they, and I think there was goodwill there. There was an attempt to be good neighbors and good stewards. They went ahead and spent a lot of money to take down that coal-fired power plant two years ago.
Great. Thank you.
Councilman Woodard, so you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, when we, I thought my colleague was going to touch on it, but when we were looking at the Chesapeake Preservation Act, where are we referencing the upgrades that you guys are promising for this potential project?
So they're in the plan of development. So what was presented to the planning commission was a plan of development that included the stormwater management upgrades that would be, that if this were to be approved, would be constructed on the facility. So the plan of development has those stormwater management upgrades in it.
Did we get this from, did you get this from the actual website, or have you been working with the Chesapeake Preservation Committee or whatnot to get this information to apply to this potential project?
Yes. So Kemley Horn is here and can handle technical information, but the answer is yes. They've worked closely with your staff, worked closely with the guidelines for the CBPA. As you may remember, the site did not have any stormwater management on it when it was a coal-fired power plant. It doesn't have any stormwater management now. So the stormwater management that if this were to be approved, would be installed, would be a significant increase in benefit to the city and to the bay.
All right. And one more question. I know that you stated 100 jobs would possibly be available for, you know, employment. Is there any way that you guys are making it a point for Portsmouth residents to acquire these jobs?
And so that's been a big point with the port. The port has a very robust program to hire Portsmouth residents. We will tie right into what the port is doing and utilize those resources.
All right. Thank you.
No further questions. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. And Madam City Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, I will provide an overview of the current status of the ARPA fund allocations. As you're aware, staff adopted an ordinance in September of 2022 for the second round of ARPA funding. However, although staff made recommendations and received consensus from the, from council for the first round of ARPA funding, it has been determined that council never formally adopted an ordinance. Based on previous recommendations and further assessment by current staff, I will provide an overview of the recommended allocations. If approved, an ordinance will be prepared for the December meeting for adoption. Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I present from my seat?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Next slide. So staff, like I said, has reviewed ARPA programs for their progress to date and made recommendations for ordinance which need to be adopted by council. And these recommendations are made based upon project completeness and actual expenditures. Next. So if you look at the slide, what you see before you is what was initially requested of council to use for the allocation of the ARPA funding. Going through each line, the senior tax relief, if you look at the, you see that what council's consensus was, the actual is what was already spent in that area, and then the increase or decrease is the actual allocations. Or in this sense, I would like, I would request that council unallocate the remaining portions that are there. For instance, the senior tax relief of $1.2 million, it appears that tax relief and tax cuts are not allowable expenditures under ARPA, so we need to reappropriate that. The senior care and the universal basic care expenses, a lot of that has already been spent. So we have $47,000 left over in that category, and $225,726 left over in basic, universal basic income. The youth COVID initiative, we only spent $16,000, so you have $213 left over in that. And then the COVID mitigation strategies, you actually have $538,000. That total comes to about $2,225,362 that we need to unallocate and use towards the bottom half of the expenditures. For example, personnel retention, we actually spent $5,775,442, which was over what council's consensus was by almost $1 million. The South Side Network Authority, you all authorized us to pay that into the $5 million into the South Side Network Authority. In attending the meeting yesterday, they are now going to go back to the cities and request an additional $500,000 for that. So that has been put here for that appropriation. As you all know, the $1.2 million was asked for by PRHA last, or... As you all know, the $1.2 million was asked for by PRHA last, or maybe a couple meetings ago now. That, so that $1.2 million is coming back from the second round of ARPA funding. And we also now have a second request from a property, a property that is, was currently purchased at Elm and High Street or in the process of being purchased. And that is from the developers from the Holly Point project. And so they are also requesting funding. So if amenable, we're asking for at least $1.2 to be set aside as you desire. And then we're just asking for the balance to go into additional replacements for our sewer pump stations. So that will balance out to what has been appropriated and what's left. If you go on to the next slide, it's pretty much the same detail, but the total shows what needs to be appropriated and approved by council in an amount of $33,942,564. That's what's outstanding for the ARPA allocations. And then going to the next, it shows you the same thing. Recommended allocation is a $33 million. Previously, in September, you adopted the 22.9, and then that equals your total 56,842,564 in total ARPA allocations. Finally, we have gift cards that were purchased through the ARPA fund. Apparently, in April of 2022, staff purchased 3.265,641.25 were spent in the purchase of gift cards. That equated to $12,100 cards with a $21,000 activation fee and $4,075,500 cards with a $7,131 activation fee. That pretty much tried to cover the senior care initiatives and the universal basic payments. In September of 2022, when council inquired about the status of the ARPA funds, that's when I had staff pull the sheet to give us the total allocations and the expenditures that's far. And that's when it was noted that the $3.2 million in ARPA gift cards were among the purchases. So after further assessment by the interim CFO, she determined that these cards were in an employee's office, pretty much unsecured in the office. And so we went through the process of obtaining the cards, working out with the city treasurer, in addition to the police department for their use of their property and evidence room, as well as social services vault, to try and, one, account for all the cards, but put them in a secure location. So once that was done, it was determined that we have approximately $2.3 or $2.4 million left in gift cards. Those gift cards have an expiration date of May 2023 and August of 2023, and the majority of the cards have been activated. So same as cash. So we need to distribute these cards as soon as possible. One suggestion that I made was in conjunction with our Rock the Block initiative, and we would distribute gift cards to individuals in neighborhoods that meet the ARPA guidelines. And some of those guidelines include, you know, vaccination, just anything related to the COVID-19 public health emergency, anyone that has had a negative impact or economic impact caused by the public health emergencies, such as if they've gotten their shot, if they've gotten their booster, were they unemployed, were they unable to find work, was industries shut down. So there are lots of initiatives that could be, these cards could be used for. And I would just ask your permission to move forward with distribution.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, City Manager Chapman, on page six on the gift card purchase, where it says April 2022 is 3.2 million in gift cards purchased, and then the fourth bullet point is 2.3 million remaining. So of the 3.2 is 2.3 remaining. On page three, and you said the gift cards were to be used for the senior care initiative and the universal basic income?
It is my understanding, because I wasn't here, the gift cards were used, one, for the senior care initiative, where they had an event at the sportsplex, where seniors were given gift cards. And I know at the back-to-school night, staff distributed some gift cards to youth for going back to school if they were, had their COVID shots.
So on page three, where you have the council consensus amount, and then the actual amount that was spent on page three?
Yes, sir.
So where you have the $1,222,688, and then the, that's for the senior care initiative, and then the $2,74,274 for the universal basic income. So those two amounts, those were amounts that were actually expended?
Yes.
So if the gift cards were to be?
In the gift cards, in the form of the gift cards, purchasing the gift cards.
Okay. So these were not actually distributed?
Correct. This was for the purchase of the gift cards. So we still have $2.3 million of those funds to be distributed.
Okay. And so the net that's there in each column, the $47,313 and the $225,726, those are amounts that you're saying that you want us to, of these two programs, to reallocate?
To other projects. Yes, sir. Because we already have to spend the gift cards. And so that money wasn't spent in those two categories. So we're asking to move down to another category that is needed.
Okay. So while, so you have 3.2 million, why is it that 2.3 million of those cards were activated?
That's a good question, sir. I don't have an answer to that. We are continuing to investigate the issue as to why so many cards were activated at one time.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the staff are no longer here to answer those questions.
Okay.
Ma'am, I do have one question about the 2.3 million. If it's my recollection, when we decided, based on the direct payments, I think, as I recollect, the preferred distribution was to be through gift cards, because that's how I think social services does their direct payments. I think that was the rationale for the gift cards.
Okay.
If you could talk to someone to see if that's what that was, because I believe that's why the gift cards were purchased, because when it was looked at, particularly the direct payments, as it relates to how social services does it, that was the fastest and most efficient way to deliver those funds.
Right. And social services does, well, they have the $500 gift cards, and they were meant for the ALIS population. They would also like to be able to use it for their other underserved populations as well.
Correct.
I guess the key is to go back to Dr. Whitaker's question. Why were so many activated at one time, and they weren't distributed?
Sure. And to that point, perhaps, and maybe we can get some additional information, and I don't know, that's why I'm asking the question. Can we determine why you would issue that many at that cost? I'm sure there's a rationale behind it. So if we could get some additional information, that would be helpful to help us understand. But one last question I do have, because you said there were cards left unsecured, I assume that during your process of investigation of the cards and making sure that all of them were there, have we identified that all the dollars are there in the cards?
No, we have not. One, that question is twofold. We have not identified that, although we have $2.3 million worth of cards, we don't know if there's money on the cards. That's one. Two, initially, we thought that there were approximately $3,000 worth of cards unaccounted for. After further investigation by the interim CFO, there appears to be approximately $80,000 worth of unaccounted-for cards. So that matter has been turned over to the proper authorities, and we're continuing to investigate on our end.
Okay. One more question on that. Was there a process, and I need, I need critical valid information. Was there a process from the prior administration with identifying those cards? Was there a code number for each card? Was there a ledger? Was there something to identify those cards that were received? Was there a check and balance in place?
It appears that there was not a check and balance in place. We have some documentation, or we have been told that on the first day, the distribution was kind of ad hoc. On the second day, there was more of a check and balance in place. What we have is we have a sheet of individuals that received cards, that there are duplicates of, and there are duplicates of their IDs. So the issue is still under investigation.
Okay. And so what is the timeframe in which you will report back to what the investigation found?
Well, what it will take, sir, is that, one, we need to do an independent assessment. We need to do an independent assessment of our ARPA funds, as well as other issues that were relayed to you all individually, to have an independent firm come and do a deep dive, because we're talking like $80,000 worth of $100 cards. And so if, having that independent assessment, it will then determine if there is a need for a deeper dive into certain areas that may lead to a forensic audit.
Okay. Once again, do we have a projected timeframe on what that?
No, I do not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Well, my question is, has a forensic audit been requested?
Not at this time. I spoke with my financial advisors, our financial advisors, and they suggested to have an independent assessment done to see if there's a further need for audit.
Well, if we know that $80,000 worth of cards aren't accounted for, why the delay?
Sir, when I spoke with each of you, as you stated in your email, that you were not in support of moving forward at this time, that it should be the matter of brought to the attention of the Commonwealth attorney. And so that's what we're doing, as far as the reaching out to the proper authorities.
That was a general request, and it wasn't anything specific. If you recall, I requested additional specific information. The gift card situation was not part of that request. I'm just learning about that setting right here. So I would think, we don't know that there aren't more gift cards missing.
You're absolutely right.
Well, I'll go back to my question. Why are we waiting on a forensic audit?
We are not, we are, there's a process, sir. One, I would need to get the amount, the cost for the forensic audit, and I need to come back to council to get approval, depending on how much that cost is. I've turned the matter over to the proper authorities, so they're doing their investigation. So no one's waiting. We are in the process, process of doing our internal investigation. We are in the process of, you know, we have made the proper reports, and now we're in the process of looking for an independent agency, per your request, by the way, to, your initial request, to look and see who can fulfill the requirements that we're looking for.
And I take it that no cards will not be distributed until we have the answer to that?
Well, that's, we're running against a catch-22, because the cards expire in May. We can call the agency and hopefully account for the cards we have before we distribute anymore, because we have taken an audit of what we have on hand. Literally, once we had the boxes in hand, we had members from the treasurer's office, as well as city finance, literally go through card by card, card, to audit of what is on hand, put in the serial numbers, so we know what we have. Distributing the rest of the cards, the time is of the essence, unless we're going to lose $2.3 million, because it was purchased from an outside entity, that it's not like we can just return the money.
Well, it goes back to the sense of urgency with the forensic audit, knowing that we're facing a May deadline.
And we will get to that as soon as possible. I hope to have an ordinance before you, before December, because by the time I met with the financial advisors last week, it was too late to present an ordinance for today. So you'll have an ordinance by December.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Manager, does the city finance department have a formal policies and procedures process on the dispersment of any type of funds, and specifically these cards? And do we believe that that was violated?
I can't speak to whether it was violated or not. That would be, there appears to be some improprieties as far as the way the process was administered, the way the cards were administered. I did receive documentation after, afterwards, that appeared to be some processes. But in speaking to employees, it doesn't appear those processes were always followed. And so our procurement processes in general are an area of concern that needs a deeper dive into what staff are doing as far as procurement. I literally just had a procurement training on Friday with our department heads, so we can ensure going forward that everyone knows what our procurement processes are. Thank you.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor then. Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you. I guess it's more into these cards that's being accounted for. Was the, was the discrepancies, when was that discovered? Was it discovered here in City Hall, or was it discovered from them being distributed through social service?
No, it was discovered here in City Hall.
So, so the, I guess the discovery of people being given duplicate cards that was discovered here?
Yes.
Okay.
There were duplicate names on the list, not necessarily, and we don't know who received the cards, so.
But if your name's up there twice, then you probably received more than one card?
Perhaps.
All right. And you're saying that you don't actually know if those cards have money on them? You just physically counted those cards and assumed that it's 2.3 million on these cards?
We have $2.3 million worth of cards, like 100 gift cards and 500 gift cards. We have not contacted companies to see if we can run a report to see if they actually have money on the cards.
And you said social services still have their cards?
Social services still has their $500 gift cards. Yes.
Okay. And what are we doing to, like you said, we're going to work some out with their programs, or we'll be receiving that money back?
Yes. If we, if we are able to get approval from council to move forward, and they can increase their population, because they said that they would love to be able to expand their pool, whether it's their foster care children, or, you know, individuals in poverty. I mean, just being able to increase the number of individuals that we can distribute those cards to is what their ask is. One of the issues they have with just doing, distributing to the ALIS population is the manpower and the intensity, the scrutiny it takes to actually ensure that someone meets that population. And due to staff shortages, and then the changing requirements this coming January, that we'll revert to individuals having to work, it's going to be challenging for them just to focus on the ALIS population. So they would So they would like to increase the individuals that they are able to distribute cards to.
All right, thank you. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
I think Mr. Battle had his hand up before I did.
I apologize, Mr. Battle. Sir, you have the floor.
When the prior city manager was here, on several occasions, I asked for a forensic audit, and she told our council that there was no difference basically in the audit that was done and a forensic audit. I took the time to explain the difference to the citizens and to the staff and to the council, at which the council declined to do a forensic audit. This is documented and on tape. So I think it's kind of not genuine to play the audit game now at this point. I think, you know, it's not being true to the citizens or to the ethics that we all be crying about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, City Manager Chapman, the expiration dates of May 2023 and August 2023, those are being driven by when the activation occurred?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what is driving that. I will have to check into staff, which staff, and get back to you on that.
Okay, and so as we look to allocate these remaining cards, one of the issues that I know that we pressed the last time about distribution was that it be done not in just some type of first come, first served basis, where we saw the chaos of seniors standing out in the heat and some of them passing out. It should be done in a dignified manner, where people do not have to feel they have to bum rush somewhere to get a card. So I hope that whatever process we put in place is a process where it, where it's done in, in a dignified manner, where even, I think we mentioned too, that there are populations that have already been identified, so we have addresses and means of getting those to them, instead of them having to stand in a line outside of social service or a sports complex to get a gift card. So I hope that that process will be definitely improved. And also, whatever that process is, that council be made aware of what the process is, because we didn't even realize that cards were being distributed that day. And so I hope that that will be taken into account. And as far as the timeline, that's really going to be based on when you receive information back to move forward. On the remaining items that we, you need our consensus on, is that something that will be voted, that you want us to vote on next council meeting, or what, how, how is that process?
Yes, so if we can get your consensus tonight, we'll put together the ordinance for next council meeting to move forward, for you all to vote on. But in reference to the process itself, what I envision is for us going to the community, similar to Rock the Block. Like, we identify neighborhoods, whether it's London Oaks, Dale Homes, those areas, and we literally go out into the communities. We utilize either the police department's command truck or their community centers, and we knock on doors, identify the individuals that meet the categories, and then, once they sign the form that they meet one of these categories, we send them to the place to actually pick up the cards. And so, like you said, in a dignified manner, it's not a bum rush, et cetera. So just an orderly process is what I envision.
And then my last issue with this, that, when will council, and I guess this is Mr. Mayor Council decide, when will we have a discussion? Because there's still issues I have with the 1.2 million in PRHA, because we never did receive the requested information. So I hope there'll be some time where we will actually discuss this in full before we actually act on it.
We will follow up with PRHA to see why that information wasn't sent out, and upon receiving that information and having it reviewed, we can certainly have that discussion.
Right, because you remember, it's supposed to have been the last two years of their audited financials, and we were told they had those, and it was on the website, but the last two years of their audited financials were not on the website.
That, that is correct. That is what we were told, and you are correct. And so we will make that request a second time, and I'm hopeful that they would adhere to the request. Did you have anything else, sir? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor, then, then Vice Mayor Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. While we're talking about different groups and different individuals that need financial support, we have some of the Portsmouth family that falls into that category, and that's our retirees under Police and Fire Retirement Programs, Portsmouth Supplemental. And I've brought this issue up in the past, and now, now we have the means to do it. I think this group that retired back when wages and retirement has resulted, as years have passed, many of those people are at or below the poverty level, as we sat here tonight. So, Mayor, if there's consensus, I would like for this council to request staff to come back at our next meeting with a recommendation on, on what we can do. I know $1,500 has been mentioned in the past. I think that's a good starting point, but if there's consensus, I would like for staff to come back at our December meeting with a recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
With those payments to the citizens, the universal payments to the citizens, I know we talked about doing, at first we were talking about doing more families, but we talked about doing 25 families, a monthly payment for two years. Did we actually do that?
I saw that in the documentation, but it doesn't appear it was done.
So, so we actually didn't do it?
I don't think we did.
Was the funds that was supposed to set aside for that included in the gift cards?
I wasn't here, so I don't know, I can't speak to that.
Okay, also, when it came to the gift cards, was there any particular person that was used, and, and whoever it was, could we go back to them and ask for the expiration date to be extended?
We can ask. It was a, a company, so we can see if that's plausible.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, did you want the floor? I know Council, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, and then Vice Mayor, I mean, excuse me, Councilman Battle, did you want the floor again, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, you're so kind, sir. I'm going to pass right now.
I did have a question. I don't think he, I don't think he has a question.
Did you, you didn't want the floor?
No.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, then Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Madam Manager, one last question for me regarding the, the 2.3 million dollar card balance that remains, and if there is an expiration date of May and August of 2023, if an investigation is put into play, I mean, I guess, just, will they have to take into consideration those that remain? I mean, will they ask to freeze any, you know, dispersment? Are we going to just put a little record aside and say that these 500 people got this amount, and then we want to investigate this amount? So, I mean, we, we're kind of playing cards with mixed deck on?
The investigation will be towards the unaccounted, the cards that are unaccounted for. Like I said, we can go back and hopefully get an account from the company on whether the cards we have are still active or not, I mean, are still, still have funding on it or not. Hopefully it does, and then we should be fined. The cards that are unaccounted for, because like I said, we have done an inventory, a log, card by card, on the cards we have on hand. So we know the card numbers, we know whether it was $100 or $500. That's all accounted for. It's the cards that are in question, and not necessarily the cards, but the items that, from the sheet, that are in question, whether they actually received cards or not.
Okay, and so that's not in the batch with the remaining 2.3?
Correct, no, they're separate.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
I'm just trying to get clarification on what Councilman Moody was referring to, the $1,500 seen relief. Was that something being tied to ARPA funding?
Mr. Moody, sir, would you provide some clarification, please?
Yes, I would like to see it, if that qualifies, which I think it would, to come out of ARPA money. And that's part of, Dr. Whitaker, that's part of what I've requested staff to come back with for a recommendation?
There wasn't, well, if I heard you correctly too, you were tying that into some type of poverty measure, which there already is a income criteria that I thought was part of the distribution. So as, as is discussed with management, if persons meet those criteria, then they would be eligible to receive funding under the ARPA. But I think you're, you're talking about carving out something that we have talked about substantially, and it has major financial impact on, I thought, the general funds. So I have, I don't think there's been a consensus on that.
Well, I've asked for a consensus, and it's something that we've done in the past, so there is precedence for doing it, whether it comes, I'm recommending that it comes out of ARPA funds, not the general fund, but I've asked for a consensus.
Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor.
So, Ms. Manager, you'll be dealing with two things. You'll be dealing with the time that we have to spend the money, and you kind of want to make sure you don't let the, that catch you. And then, if we're going to give money to retirees, I'm sure you're going to have to make sure that they live in the city, because if they live in another city, then they very well may not be eligible for that funding.
And we also have to determine how many retirees there are, and what is the financial impact?
Part of what I've asked staff to get back. We have those numbers.
Okay, so, so there is, there is a request on the floor for a call, consensus call, to ask the manager to come back with a report identifying individuals who are retired, to determine if we can provide any level of, I think $1,500 was mentioned, but a level of support to those individuals based on their income. Do we have a consensus for council to ask the manager to move forward with that? Give me a show of hands. Only see three hands, so I don't believe that's going to be enough to have a consensus. The last question I do have, Madam Manager, and we need to move forward because we have a heavy agenda. The last question I do have is, you mentioned that 2.3, and in your document, six, on page six, 2.3 million dollars of cards outstanding. Then you stated that you, you know we have 2.3 million dollars. Then you stated that you have not contacted the company to see if money is on it. I, I, I understand that, but I just find it, we just need to know how much money we have, because we're stating we have 2.3 million dollars, we know, and then we're saying we have to contact the company to know how much money we have. So we just need to figure that out.
Yes, sir. Well, the assumption is we have the cards, so the money's on it, but as we know, we can't make assumptions.
Correct, and that's, that's, that's my point. Correct, yes, ma'am.
Well, the, the company can also tell us the amount that's been redeemed.
They can, sir.
I mean...
They can tell us the amount that's been redeemed, but because the vast amount of cards, it's not an overnight answer. We need to know which numbers are missing, which, I mean, it's not like we have the numbers for what's missing.
I'm certain they can give you the amount that's been redeemed and the numbers.
Perhaps.
Associated with the redemptions. I would thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Mr. Battle, sir?
In reference to not allowing the $1,500 to folk in poverty, I voted no, because why would we give some folk $500 who are in poverty, and then turn around and give another group who are in this very same thing, 1,500? So if it were 500, I would have voted yes, but all, all sides are in poverty, so I just would like to treat them all the same.
Fair enough, sir. If we could move, Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just want to be, make it clear as well. So our retirees, as long as they qualify for the programs that are set, they can apply for a $500 gift card.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam, Madam Manager, is, is that the conclusion of your proposal?
That is the conclusion of the presentation. We will now move into the conference room to, where Ms. Sheri Neal will provide an overview of our state and federal legislative initiatives during our joint session with our state representatives.
Thank you, ma'am. If everyone could move to the conference room, we will continue our meeting with the General Assembly. Thank you. I would now call to order our state legislative meeting, and certainly want to welcome our wonderful legislative person on our team, Ms. Sheri Neal, and I would ask, at this point, if our state delegation would introduce themselves, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of you who do not know, I am L. Louise Lucas. I am the representative for 18th Century District, which includes Portsmouth, and of course, 11 other localities, and I am currently serving as the President Pro Tem of the Senate.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council folks. How you doing, Madam, Madam Legislative Affairs? Good to see you. I'm Don Scott, I'm a House member of House District 80, House of Delegates. I'm also happen to be a House Democratic Caucus Leader at this point, the leader of the minority in the House of Delegates. So I think y'all have a pretty good tag team here in the city of Portsmouth to be able to at least get to the right people at the right time, and hopefully we'll be able to help advance the state's agenda.
Thank you, sir. And before I ask Ms. Neal to take the floor, I would ask, I would ask and introduce our newly-elected councilman, Councilman-elect Mark Hubel, and Councilman-elect Vernon Tillage. And ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city managers, staff, delegation members. Unfortunately, Delegate Clark contacted me during the earlier session and said he had a bit of a family emergency, and so he was not going to be able to join us this evening. So we do thank our senator and our delegate for being here this evening. Moving forward, this is our 2023 state legislative initiatives for our upcoming General Assembly Recognizing that we are going into a short session, that there's been limitations set based on our senators and our delegates for the number of legislation, bills that they can carry, and it is an election year, where all 140 seats are going to be up next year, so we're pretty sure you're going to try to get out as soon as you can. We have a short agenda for you this year. So we have just two budget requests, and we have several policy, statewide policy So we have just two budget requests, and we have several policy, statewide policy initiatives that are in sync with our organizations that we're affiliated with, such as the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Virginia Municipal League, Virginia First Cities, and the others. So, but first, I would like to once again thank our delegation members, and in particular, both of you, for all of your work on the Midtown Downtown Tunnel Tolls projects. This has been an issue for us for years, and as we all know, that we have a new program that has come into place from all of the stakeholders who have worked together to change the program. So now it's for fifty thousand dollars. Income-level people who live anywhere within Hampton Roads can qualify for this relief, which I'm sure is going to be a great help to many, especially with the increasing of the tolls that begins in January, with two-axle vehicles being charged six dollars and ninety-five cent if they pay by plate, and EZ Pass rates are going up to two seventy-seven at peak hours. So we thank you for all of your help with that particular measure, and we will continue to monitor this program to tweak it as possible as it moves forward down the line. So our first budget amendment is dealing with the road impact fees for the Virginia Port Authority, host, host cities of the port. And as you heard in the earlier presentation this evening, VIG has expanded tremendously. Cargo, they're doing great, volumes are up, cargo's moving, and what hasn't happened is this million dollars that we were given back in two thousand and six has remained at a million dollars for our road impact fees. And without going through this whole slide, if you look at the last time, the most recent time I looked at the inflation rates, that million dollars today is worth about five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So we are asking for at least a minimum increase in this budget line of a million dollars. We'll take more if you guys can put it in there. Next.
Well, we will be carrying that on both sides.
We will.
Thank you. And then the second and last budget amendment is dealing with the RAGE grant that we were successfully receiving from the federal government this year, and that was for the Complete High Street Innovation Corridor. It's going to do great things for the city. We received all but four point eight million dollars' worth of the money is what we need, and that we're hoping that we can look to our General Assembly partners for that, to close that gap, so we can move the project forward. Next slide. As I stated earlier, we stand pretty much in lockstep with our partners of, that we are affiliated with, and a lot of our colleagues from the cities in our sister cities. So listed here, and then the next couple of slides are just a few of the state public policy initiatives that have come out of all of our collective legislative packages. So just to touch on a couple of them. Of course, we support increasing the 599 Fund for our police departments. Well, we support consistent funding of the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund at the fifty millions. We are supporting the establishment of excise taxes on the sale of vaping products, include cannabis products. Next slide. Oh, let me back up. There's one I wanted to point out in particular. Just we support state assistance decreasing the time demands on police officers with TDOs. That's a big problem statewide, as we all know. So we did want to put, point that out. Whatever can be done to help take the onus off of our police departments would be of a great assistance.
Excuse me, Ms. Neal?
Yes.
I know that at the regional level, we had that meeting, and I think you were in that meeting that we had. In terms of the regional coalition coming together to take that to the state, are we still working on that?
Yes, sir.
In terms of coordination?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes. Everything that you see here is going to be in our regional packages. A lot of these are also in our sister cities packages. So we're all working in lockstep on these items.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And then on this slide, I just point out a couple. The support of removal of barriers to use technology to address crime. It appears that using drones and things of that nature, there seems to be some problems with that, still dealing with the code. So anything that could be done, if it's a study that needs to be done by the Crime Commission, whomever, is something that really needs to be looked at. And of course, if we're removed from the regional greenhouse gas initiative funding, we would like to make sure that that money is replaced.
I don't think it's going to happen.
That's not going to happen.
No.
That's not going to happen. Okay. And also, we support making the transportation fund whole, because as you know, with the removal of the taxes for the groceries, a portion of that tax money went to the transportation fund, and it wasn't replaced. So that's going to leave a hole in that, and it's also going to impact transit funding. So we would like that to be looked at as well. And last but not least, we oppose any state limits on local authority over the management of our school districts, reduction of diversion of state funds and resources intended for local public schools to fund charter schools.
That don't happen.
Need I say anymore?
My chair.
And next slide. So that was it. That's all we have for you this particular year. We, tonight is our meeting, and this evening at seven o'clock, council will take up our legislative packages by resolution. Next month, the governor presents his budget on the fifteenth with the, it should say twelve fifteen, and not one. Sorry for the mistake there. But December fifteenth is when the Joint Money Committees and the Finance Committee meets with the governor in order to present the budget, and then we have the upcoming General Assembly sessions. VML VACO Day, Legislative Day is January nineteenth, and like I said, this is a short session, and we'll be out by mid-February. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes, Ms. Neal, the issue in the past pertaining to the caps, that were, the cap that was put on the non-support positions for public school funding, where is that in the process? I know there was some legislation passed.
This year.
Where, where are we on that?
We increased, we increased the funding for, yeah, yeah, for, you talking about the support staff?
Non, the, the non-support, it was, it's a, it was a cap that was instituted during the.
You're talking about the counselors and whatnot? Are you talking about the counselors? That big issue that they had, that we increased the funding back to last year?
No, this was the, during the Kane administration, when the cap was put on
Oh, that's right, the cap was put on.
Non-support positions.
I believe, Mayor, Mayor Glover, Councilman Whitaker, I believe they're responding the same thing. I think the counselors were under the non-support staff. So what they did is that instead of just removing the whole cap, they took more of the staff that was under that cap and removed them out.
So that they could get the increase.
That they could get the.
Increase.
But they haven't lifted the cap totally.
Right. Okay. Then the last issue, is there any movement on living wages at all?
Well, we, we increased the minimum wage. As you know, it had been seven thirty-five or something like that forever. We just increased it. It's like nine forty-five now. It's scheduled to go up to as high as twelve dollars. We made a, it was a compromise to give, our, our goal was to get it to fifteen dollars an hour within, within the next three years, and what happened is we had to do a reenactment. That's a reenactment, it's in there to go to fifteen, but we have to vote on it again both sides. So that'll happen next, not twenty-three or twenty-four, that we'd have to vote on to get it to fifteen. But it'll go up to twelve dollars without any other action.
Right.
But we need to get it to fifteen dollars, and that'll only happen if, you know, I don't think the Republicans tried to repeal, I'm not getting into politics, but they tried to repeal the minimum wage that we had already increased and take it back to seven, to seven bucks. So we know that there's some work to be done to make sure that we get to that living wage that everybody.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Neal. One of the things I wanted to ask a question about, and I know it's not in this, this agenda for this legislative session, I think that in light of some of the challenges we have had with our local government, dealing with our appointees, whether it was terminating them, hiring them, our, our council needs to have a discussion about perhaps changing the charter to reflect a supermajority in order to hire one of our appointees or to terminate one of our appointees. And that's in lieu of what we've experienced the last couple of years. So I know that discussion probably will need to take place. I think this agenda for this year is set for the most part, but, but I think once the new council comes in in January, we will need to have a discussion, and perhaps that's for the next legislative session. I, I don't know, I was just asking.
But let me just add something to that. In order to do that, you know, you're going to have to have a resolution from the majority of the members of council, first of all.
Yes, ma'am.
To get it to happen, before it can even get considered.
Okay.
And so just keep that in mind.
Thank you.
And you'd do a lot better if you have a good majority of the members that would vote in favor of, of a resolution like that.
Sure.
Because, you know, all those years that I got four and five votes on a resolution for the casino, it didn't happen.
Yes, ma'am.
So you've got to have a good number.
Very good. Thank you, Senator.
Yes, and the only other avenue that I have been told that can transpire is that any legislator can put in a charter change on a local government without going through the city council process. And while tentatively that is an avenue that can be, can be explored, it's not generally received well at the General Assembly if the council does, does not support it. Recently, I think a situation of that happened with Delegate Kilgore in the town of Pound, where he put one in without any of the council town members supporting it, so it ran into a problem during the General Assembly session. But if a legislator was to put one in, and a majority of council that, at the time, supports it, it can be done. So that's, that's.
Thank you, ma'am, for the information.
I just, I just want to say something about some of your initiatives here, just to hit them real quick. On, on your TDO issue, that's a huge issue across the country. Where officers are being, I was at Maryview, sat down with them, officers are having to sit there with folks who are being, and they know them, they get the means, they may get, they may get restored, go on the street, and then they're dated to themselves or someone else, and they come back, and the officer has to sit with them until the mental health professional can come and work with them. There's a huge mental health professional shortage. We are going to put forth some legislation to try to deal with that, or workforce and workforce legislation, along with some kind of incentives to get folks to even want to get into that field. So there's a huge shortage, that's what's pulling our police officers away, because we have some mental health issues. And then on, you talked about the use of technology. We passed, and I know there was a lot of folks who may have thought that it was antithetical to folks who are in a democratically controlled area, but we have some crime issues. We passed a bill allowing facial recognition technology to be passed. I think there have even been some vendors that have presented to, to the city here recently to give you an opportunity to utilize that technology, some gunshot technology. So the technology is ahead of where we are legislatively, and the problem is making sure that we protect people's privacy rights, make sure that it's not being abused. We changed the legislation where folks could use it for investigative reasons, but they couldn't use it to get probable cause, just to be able to protect public safety first, and that's what we need to do. The last thing I will say, last session, I put in, along with the senator, a five million dollar witness protection program, budget amendment, because I think we need it, because we have people who live in communities that if something happens, they may be a witness, and they may say something, but by the time trial comes, and I know you've been watching the news, the Commonwealth Attorney in Norfolk, we're getting a lot of heat about it, witness is not showing up. But that's not his fault. That's a community issue, and that we need to make people feel safe enough so they can come into the community. We've asked for, that, that budget amendment was shot down on party lines last year. From what I've been told, matter of fact, I know this, talked to the governor's staff, they have, they put it in this time, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, they say imitation is the greatest form of flattery, so I'm not worried that they took the idea and that they're going to promote it this time, and hopefully they've put even more than five million dollars in it, because we need it. There are some people who cannot go back to that community if they're going, if they have children, have a family to testify. So hopefully, this witness protection program will help keep a lot of our community safer, and that's a way that we can make sure that we attract some of the witnesses that we need.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
If I, if I might just circle back to education and health, because you know, that's the committee that's nearest and dearest to my heart. This year, I introduced the bill for K three literacy, which puts additional funds in the budget to make sure that we have reading specialists in the schools. It's not so much that we're looking at it from a, from the viewpoint of learning loss as it is learning interruption, because with the pandemic was what interrupted everybody's learning. What I'm doing this next session is continuing that forward with four through eight grade, to make sure that we capture the students from K through eight, yes, to make sure that we can kind of make up some of that learning interruption. A lot of people say learning loss, but I think there's a better way to say that. So just, just to let you know, we managed to get it funded last year, and I think it's probably going, we're looking at something like fifty million more dollars to put into the education budget to make sure that we have those teaching specialists in place, and so that's going to be one of the major initiatives this year for education and health.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Councilwoman Lucas, back down, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sheri Neal, Senator Lucas, Delegate Scott. I see that our legislative initiatives consist of the budget amendments and the policy initiatives, but other than our VACO, VML Legislative Day, and the VML newly-elected Officers Meeting that we will attend, is there a need or for our presence to be in some of the meetings, the amendment meetings, or just there?
My answer to that is always yes, and especially, always yes, and especially when it comes to issues like the 599 fund, because for a long time, those funds had dried up.
Yes.
And we were able to get some funding back in the budget in the 2022 session, and we're hoping to extend that in 2023. So anytime we have a presence of the localities there to help get us to get those bills ushered through, it makes a big difference when the people who are sitting at those committees voting on those issues see the folks from those locality acting like they care about them.
That's right.
And if I may add to that, the legislature has made it a lot easier in a lot of cases for people to participate in the process via Zoom. You know, now, not only do you need, can be in present, come in present, but you can call, you can make emails, you can participate at the committee meetings, the subcommittees via Zoom without having to make the trip to Richmond. So as much support and as much input that we can get from our council members and other citizens and stakeholders to support our initiatives when we're up there, it's helpful. What I try to remind people is that, you got to remember, there's a hundred and forty legislators up at the General Assembly. You have a hundred in the Senate, and you have, you have a hundred, sorry, in the House and forty in the Senate. We have five representatives, three senators, two delegates. So we need to support them and their efforts as much as we possibly can. To help get our, our issues through.
Absolutely.
Did I not say that correctly?
You know, and I, you know, I think it's of note that we say here in Hampton Roads, we pretty much have the, the handle on the leadership, the power in the General Assembly.
Which is very helpful.
Leader Scott being the leader in the House, and with me being President Pro Tim in the Senate. It's been a long time since we've had that kind of leadership in Hampton Roads. It hasn't been since it was Tom Mars and Stanley Walker. You know how many years ago that was?
Very true.
Over twenty-five years.
Yes, so.
You've had this leadership.
So we're very fortunate to have both of you in the positions that you are, and we're grateful for all that you do to help our city and to, you know, the citizens of Portsmouth.
That may not be significant to a lot of people, but it makes a lot of difference when you sit at the money table.
Well, you didn't say that. You, you said you were Senate Pro Tim, you didn't mention that you also. And the money mix, but yeah, definitely.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
My question, during the last session, the recall legislation was presented by you, Senator, on the Senate side, and Representative Scott on the House side, and it was to align Portsmouth with the state.
That's correct.
So why is it that that legislation is not being presented again because it was voted down along party lines?
It was.
And if, what you're saying that, you know, the power positions that we have.
We don't have the votes in the House of Delegates.
Right.
That was a problem.
Right.
And we won't have them this year either.
Right, but I'm saying that's.
I don't have a problem with presenting it again.
That's what I'm saying, is we've had legislation before that was voted down, but we just kept putting it forward.
I have no problem with that.
I have no problem either.
Y'all need to talk amongst yourselves, and if y'all present it to us, and then it has to support.
You could tell us right now, you want to introduce, and all we got to do is roll it in.
Y'all need a consensus, and then that's one, and then two, y'all, somebody will have to come up there this time. I think Ms. Neal was there last time alone. We, we're going to do what we do, but y'all have to understand it's politics involved, and I'm not saying that, you know, that's just how it is. And there are a lot of people during the last cycle that used the city of Portsmouth to get fame. fame, and Portsmouth was on the front page. That was during the time of Confederate Memorial and all this other stuff that people used to make a name for themselves. So there are some.
That same person was the one that flipped that bill.
There are some people who want to continue some of the madness here sometimes, and we just need to make sure that they know that the city would like that done. And they can still say no because they don't have to vote, but that's why we're working hard in next cycle to get the majority so we can and get that done.
Well, I took that as an attack on you because of your comments, you know.
It was.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And the visit.
So I don't think, I don't think we should let that cause us not to put forth a legislation that would put Portsmouth in line with.
I can get it out of the Senate.
You are the, yeah, it failed in the House. It came out of the Senate there, and I was there to watch the Senator come and present it again, and that's what happened. I mean, but you never know. This is a different environment right now. There are folks who may have a change of heart based on the political climate that we're in right now. So it's up to the council. Y'all probably should discuss it, and if, and if your legislative liaison tells us that's what you want, then we're going to do it.
Well, Ms. Mayor, I would ask that we take a consensus to add the recall language that we had submitted last legislative session to this legislative package.
Is there any other discussion on that matter? Go ahead.
Sorry. Question to the city attorney. Would we not need to have another public hearing for that, or does the one from last year still stand?
No, we need another public hearing.
Would you have time to get it done before? Because it's a first day bill, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
So it has to be, everything has to be done prior to the first day of session.
You only have one more meeting?
Yep.
One more meeting.
Oh, a special.
Yeah, you call it special to have four public hearings.
First, can we get a consensus to at least move forward with?
Well, I think, I think before we get the consensus to move forward, I think we need a discussion, and then we can ask for a consensus. So what I heard is we still need a referendum. So even with the consensus, after we have the discussion, we can still come up with the consensus, but we still need the process to be in place to make it happen. So can we have a discussion here, and then we can take a consensus? Does anybody have anything to add to that discussion? Seeing none, then I will call for a consensus to add the language back into our legislative items for the, what provision was that again?
Aligning the recall.
Right, aligning the recall provision with.
With the state.
With the state code.
State code.
Has anybody got a copy of what that language was?
I don't have a copy of it right with me, maybe.
I don't recall it. I just remember, I just recall that the state code talks about recalling state officials, and that most of the local, local, localities, most of the localities align with that. Portsmouth is an outlier, the way we do recalls, which is why we have more recalls than anybody else. And so we probably need to figure out, you know, unless we want to continue to do this and have folks, you know, recalling every time something happens or somebody disagrees with a decision, we need to align ourselves with, with what the state is, which allows people to come back and vote again, and vote folks out or in, you know what I mean, as opposed to using the recall process. But you guys are the city council. Y'all thinking, y'all probably, doesn't sound like y'all have the full consensus yet. And once y'all do behind closed doors, or whatever y'all do, and y'all come out and have a public hearing, then y'all can take it up. Because I don't know if I want to be making that decision, that before you. But we're staying, we did it last time, and we're staying ready and willing to do it again. But I don't want to, we're not members of council, so I don't want to get in council business. I'll let council, council do council.
I think in the interest of the discussion, we need to have the language put back in front of us so we can make an informed decision.
That's, that's if the majority feels that way. I was asking for a consensus.
Okay. Do we have a consensus to accept what the councilman has asked to put on the floor for our legislative person to move forward with?
Last year, so.
I didn't see your hands. I'm looking, okay. So we have, we have four people, so that's fine.
Five.
Five people. Okay, five people. That's fine.
Okay, well, as soon as you all finish your process, we'll go back and pull up the language from the 2022 session.
I have it in front of me.
Can you, can you get us a copy of the language, just so we can look at it again, please?
Look at Senate Bill 523 from 2022. Yes. And the House companion should be listed on there as well, which was Delegate Scott.
It was House Bill 523.
It was Senate Bill 523. And the House bill was associated with it.
I carry the House bill. I don't recall the number.
What's the House bill number?
I'm going to give it to you. Yeah, you click on that when it's texted about from. Senate Bill 523, and. I'll just go to your name.
But we already have the, since we can move on to the next, next item, sir.
I'm just waiting for her. She has the floor. I haven't relinquished the floor yet. So she, I want to make sure that she's done, and then we'll move on to the next item, sir. Thank you.
I was trying to figure, what is the, what is the information we're trying to find?
Well, I just wanted to give her an opportunity if she had any last comments, sir. So then we will go ahead and move on with the agenda. Okay?
I'm good. And again, any legislator could put forth a charter amendment without counsel.
Well, Ms. Neal, I will speak on behalf of council, and I really thank you for your efforts up there in representing the city of Portsmouth. I want to thank Mr. Leader, Delegate Scott, and also Senate Leader Pro Temp.
President Pro Temp.
President Pro Temp. Senator Lucas, thank you guys for all you do for our city. And I would add, I know we're all aware, and I know that Senator Lucas is intimately aware that on the 15th, we will be opening up Virginia's first freestanding casino in the state.
Over 20 years.
And it will be the first and the finest. And I just wanted to congratulate you, as I have on a number of occasions, for your tenacity, for your leadership, for all you've done to ensure that you made that dream a reality. I don't think it happens without you being in the seat. So thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, I just wanted to give the Senator and our delegate an opportunity to share with us any insights that they may have as to or concerns about the upcoming general assembly session.
Well, there's no question in my mind that education is going to be the tip of the spear again. As you know, we've been working on these SOLs, and as many of you may not know, five of the members on the State Board of Education have yet to be confirmed. And so we'll be looking heavily at whether or not they maintain those seats. I know I in particular would like to see five of them gone, because anytime you have members on the State Board of Education who would like to whitewash history, erase history, I think they're in the wrong place, and there's no place for them in state government as far as I am concerned. So one of the issues that I will be working on will be to make sure that all history gets included in our history books, in our science books, because just like I said when I was on Joy Reid Program last Friday, black history is American history.
Indeed.
I know exactly where I was the day that Martin Luther King was assassinated. I'm only two years younger than Emmett Till. That's history that I lived, all through massive resistance, when our schools got closed down for five years. That's history I lived, and I'd be damned if I would let anybody erase it.
Amen.
That's how strong my sentiments are about it.
My concerns continue to lie around our economic development for our city, for Commonwealth, from those who are less fortunate to give them an opportunity to take part like I did in the American dream. I think that begins with education, and it's not just higher education. I know we have an emphasis on college first, but it's about job training, the shipyard has, from what I've been told, they have close to 20,000 jobs they're going to need over the next several years, welding, pipe fitting. We need to make it a priority in our communities to educate our youth, get them an opportunity, let them know where we need to be on track to get those, those good paying jobs, those jobs that will pay your mortgage, those jobs will take care of their children. A lot of those jobs are good, union jobs. We need to, we did a lot in my first session to make sure that we have strong collective bargaining for state workers, I mean, for local workers. If localities opt in, and that's something that we strongly support, because we think that if you pay people their worth, they'll be loyal. They'll pay you back. And hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to do that, and folks will make Portsmouth their home. They'll make the city their home, and that's what we want to do. We want to try to promote our folks that live, work, and play in this city. You know, we want them to be here and thrive here, and I think that is a great opportunity if we, you know, one of my old teachers said romance without finance is a nuisance. So you can talk about all these other issues, but if the money ain't right and the opportunities aren't right, yeah, we, then our people don't have an opportunity to thrive. And so hopefully, we're putting people in a position where they can be successful financially.
Thank you both, and we agree with, well, I can't speak for everybody, but I know I agree with everything you guys just said, so thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll move on to our next item. Madam City Manager.
Are we excused?
Yes, unless you want to stay and enjoy.
I don't like sitting in the presence of.
Contrary to what's, a lot of people believe, we try to stay out of your business. Thank you, Ms. Neal. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, Senator.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, Sherri.
I thought she said Kiss Brian.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, if you might indulge me for a moment. Will, can you step back in? I want to introduce my new chief of, chief of staff. His name is Will Smith, and he's not the one who smacked Ron.
I will.
Will, happy Thanksgiving, sir. Good to see you, man.
Okay.
Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements to make. Fuchsia's Project, which is our citywide camera system, is scheduled to go live mid-December. So December 14th is scheduled to go live. I want to commend our IT staff and our police department for working with our vendors. So that is on schedule to go live next month. The Crime Prevention Plan, Chief Jenkins submitted the draft Crime Prevention Plan to me for review last night, so I will be working or looking at that over the next few days, and he said that he has some additional items he would like to add as well. Currently, we're accepting applications for anyone that is serving our community in our Crime Reduction Initiative Program. So if you go online, the new round of ARPA funding or ARPA funding is now available to assist individuals in the city of Portsmouth that are helping our community in the effort to reduce crime. We received first place, we took first place in the Grand Illumination Award, I mean, Parade over in Norfolk last Saturday. The mayor, his wife, myself, Councilman Woodard, we all attended. Oh, and Councilman-elect Tillage, he also attended. So we were in the parade, and we took first place for the non-commercial float. So commendations to everyone that was involved. I also want to recognize Parks and Recs, the Fire Department, and our three high school bands who participated as well.
You're here.
The mayor already mentioned this casino opening on January 15th, and I also want to recognize our new staff, Ms. Sunshine Swinson, who's Deputy City Manager, Mr. Cliff Hayes, who's our IT Director, and our newly promoted Economic Development Director, Mr. Bryan. Donahue, thank you, thank you. And if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'll go through the CMRs.
Absolutely.
So we have a lot of CMRs, so I'll quickly run through. 22-336, adoption of ordinance accepting $42,432 from the State Compensation Board. Technology Trust Fund to the Circuit Court's Clerk's Office for fun, to fund technology maintenance improvements. 22-337, adoption of ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $708,000 from the Department of Criminal Justice Services to provide funding to the Portsmouth Sheriff's Office for salaries and benefits of 12, for 12 full-time school resource officers. 22-338, the adoption of an ordinance appropriating $310,083 from the fund balance of the general fund to the general government category for the purpose of completing our procurement disparity study. 22-339, adoption of ordinance accepting Virginia Tree for Clean Water Grant funds in amount of $4,634.35 by the use of the Department of Parks and Recreation to plant trees in City Park and Churchland Park. 22-340, adoption of an ordinance accepting settlement funds in amount of $315,332.5 from the National Opioid Settlement Fund Trust to the Behavioral Healthcare Services to improve their abatement purposes. 22-341, adoption of an ordinance accepting Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in amount of $111,232 for the use of, by the Portsmouth Police Department. 22-342, adoption of an ordinance accepting bulletproof vest program funding in amount of $53,405 from Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for bulletproof vests for the police and the sheriff's office. 22-343, an ordinance accepting hazardous material emergency response pass-through funds in amount of $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for the Portsmouth Fire Department for the, their lead in, as the agency in the South Side Regional Hazardous Material Emergency Response Team. 22-344, adoption of an ordinance accepting emergency management program grant money in amount of $57,992 from the Department of Emergency Management for the grant fund for the Fire Department as well. 22-345, adoption of an ordinance accepting the return of unexpended funding from the FY22 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund Budget in amount of $4,641,523, $4,641,523, and appropriating $2,041,523 of said funds to the city's general fund budget and transferring them to the schools projects category of the FY23 City Capital Improvement Fund Budget. Therefore, the proposed ordinance returns the remaining $2.6 million to the general fund fund balance. 22-346, adoption of an ordinance accepting $486,588 from the Commonwealth of Virginia and appropriating it to the 2023 Portsmouth Public Schools General Fund Budget. 22-347, adoption of an ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in amount of $6,611,872.17 back to the 2023 Portsmouth School General Fund Budget. 22-348, adoption of an ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds to the, in the amount of $3,113,313, $3,113,381 from the Portsmouth 2022 textbook fund balance back to their 2023 fund, textbook fund balance. 22-349, adoption of ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in amount of $4,558,881 from their 22 Public Schools Food Service Fund Budget to their 2023 food budget. 22-350, adoption of an ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in amount of $4,004,537 from the Portsmouth Public Schools 2022 Portsmouth Public Schools Grant Fund and going into the 2023 Grant Fund. 22-351, adoption of an ordinance to reappropriate unexpendable funds in amount of $3,128,184 from the FY22 Public Schools Risk Management Fund to the 2023 Risk Management Fund, excuse me. 22-352, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the terms of the Drink and Water Construction Fund financing from the Virginia Department of Health, including forgiveness of the entire principal amount of $150,000. And 22-353, adoption of resolutions approving the 2023 State Legislative Initiative Package and the 2023 Federal Legislative Initiative Package. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for taking a breath, ma'am.
So you have the floor. Right, so for, for item 22-353, what we just asked to be added to the legislative to be added to the legislative package, um, does this item need to, uh, be withdrawn for this meeting?
Madam, Madam Clerk, or Madam, or City Attorney, would you like to address that?
Sure, give me one second, let me make sure I have what it is.
This, this is the legislative...
We asked to add, right, the, the language back into, for the recall provision?
What I would, uh, ask to do is, we could always add it in, in a special session, if that's what we decide to do, we can add it to it as a separate, um, addendum to this adoption. And that way, this matter goes forward, doesn't hold up what already has been approved, and then we can always, long as it's within, within that timeframe, which is before the January date, send that up, um, subsequent to, so we don't need to remove it to do it.
So, you, you'll let us know, um, sometime here soon, I guess this week, as far, because it's, I guess it's a timeline that we have to meet.
There's a timeline, it's, it matches what Sherri just sent, but for the, um, public, um, hearing, there's a process for that as well. I just sent everyone in their email a copy of both language, both, um, bills that have the language from the House and the Senate, so that you can review that. And then, what we'll do is get a timeline, a timeline out to everyone as to what that process is, so that if a special session will need to be called, it can be called through the proper course. So, that will be done, um, before, um, the end of this week.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and, and I did have one point, uh, that I needed to share with my colleagues on council. Um, I spoke with the manager this afternoon, and, and looking at all of these ordinances that we have for reappropriating unexpendited funds, um, I'm concerned that we're reappropriating almost $20 million, and, and there's not, I, I know we have backup information, but I would, I would like to hear from the Superintendent and, and his finance team as to, you know, where, where, where seems to be the, the, the process in terms of appropriating these funds that were already expended. And here's part of my concern, it's, it's almost $20 million that the schools return back to us, and they're asking us to reappropriate those. I don't have a major issue with that, but I do have a concern with the explanation with that amount of money, and where those dollars are going to be going, because we are all, also going to be working on the budget, um, here in December for next year. And if we're reappropriating almost $20 million, um, they're gonna get funded again next year. So, we just want to make sure as a council, we're understanding clearly where the dollars are going, so that, that there's no, uh, no confusion.
Well, 18 million is unencumbered, so, you know, the question is, our current budget's appropriating, what, 60 million? So, i- if 18 is unencumbered, meaning there's no outstanding, commitments on their part, why, I mean, in essence, if we send that back, we, we've approved a $78 million, uh, budget. You understand what, what I'm saying? Uh, so, why, I'm like you, Mayor, I, I don't have a problem, but I, I'd like to know what, what's the intention, what are they gonna do with the 18 million dollars? Can we take that off of our, uh, 60 million, uh, that, that's in the current budget? I mean, that's, that's a valid question.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry.
I'm done.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I think you might want to be careful in, uh, how we phrase and put out information until you make sure you have a understanding of how these, uh, school board funds work. And, uh, for example, when, when you're looking at, uh, 22-348, uh, textbook fund, okay? Um, you know, there are certain times when you purchase and when they purchase, and so, I, I think before the public gets excited hearing you saying $20 million is unexpended...
Was that where the 18 million's going?
Well, let, let me just, I didn't cut across you, okay? Um, before we start putting out this information to get everyone excited, make sure we're educated on what these different funds are and what they represent. And so, I, I think that's a better approach to it than, um, making it appear like it's just $20 million we are funding to the schools, and they're sitting there and they haven't used it. Uh, we've been through those valleys before, and I don't think we need to, um, start striking that up again.
Well, what, what I'm saying is that, uh, we, we need some information, some feedback.
Well, like I said, I think you need to be educated. You gotta be educated now on what these different funds represent, because I can tell you this, what you just said and how you worded it, most, most of the citizens in Portsmouth don't know how the school financial budget works, okay? And council, neither. And so, let's get educated on what these different funds represent, how they are spent, before we just put out general...
I'm all for that, but, but we, we need to have that information.
Yeah, yeah. That's part of being educated.
And if I may, I, I don't disagree with Dr. Whitaker's point, and that's all I'm asking for, is an education, because we all need to be educated on what we're doing, particularly in our role as the appropriator for the funds for our schools. We support our schools.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We just need to be educated.
I will say this, um, having sat through the, um, I attend the school board meetings and, um, am in close contact with the school board in the sense of developing these resolutions.
Sure.
And they have a November audit timeframe, and so, if we push these, um, items off of today's agenda, only because we only have one meeting in November, we will be outside of their audit timeframe for their budget requirements. I, I don't know the details any more than that, other than there is a November audit timeframe. They did their budgeting, um, session with their, um, divisions, such as, um, um, the custodial staff. Each, each division came forth and argued their position for budgeting, so I think they're in the midst of their budgeting season, which is why it's in on our agenda in this timeframe. So, I would just caution that, I, I don't, I don't speak for the school board, I can just tell you that that was information I gleaned from, um, getting up to speed for these resolutions to be presented.
Maybe we could invite them to the next, uh, public work session.
Well, well, I think there's two, I, I'd like to say there's two things that I heard just now. If, if, if it's time-sensitive, and, and I'll give everybody else certainly a chance to chime in, if it's time-sensitive based on a timeline, um, so that they can meet their, 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 their commitments, I think as soon as we can do that, uh, having a conversation with them, Madam City Manager, to see if we can coordinate that with their timeline, to make sure we're not putting them in a challenging position, I think that's fair. And so, um, unless someone else has something else, um, I think that's the way we need to proceed, and if, if that timeline is, is closer than us getting together at our next meeting, um, then perhaps we may have to do something, um, before that.
You know, we have a closed session item, uh, a couple closed session items that'll buy us some time, that I'll have, um, reach out, maybe we can reach out to someone this after, this evening, to get an answer on whether this is a drop-dead timeframe where we need to get this done. And I only bring this up because, um, I don't want the budget to not work properly at the school board level, um, if it's something that we can resolve sooner than later. So, um, maybe in that timeframe of doing the closed session, and before we get to the main, um, um, resolutions and ordinances, we may have more information that may be, um, appropriate for council, maybe enough for council, so...
Well, I, I, I still think, and I'm, 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 I still think we need education.
Sure.
So, I, I don't, I don't want us to forego that opportunity, because if we don't deal with it, we're gonna continue to deal with it. So, that's just my two cents. Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, in, in the meantime, I would suggest, since council only meets twice a month at the most, and once a month in November, December, why not let our city manager, uh, sit down with the superintendent, address these issues, and she can send us, unless the city manager has an issue with this request, which I don't think has been expressed, because it's on the agenda, let that information come back, addressing the concerns, and in the meantime, um, we also get educated, informed on what these different budgets are. But I think to get the information back quick to the council, let the persons who are here doing the day-to-day work meet and get that information back to us, and, and we act on it, well, we're not, we're gonna act on it tonight, but at least we have that information. And then, if it's future education that's needed, and our public work sessions, uh, have them to inform us on these different budget items.
And I understand, and, and I, just so I'm clear, so, based on what you just said, I, I, I want to be clear that I understand what you're asking. So, based on these items that are presented tonight on our agenda, it is, it is what I heard, and I, I need you to clarify for me, we shouldn't defer it, we should approve these items to be sent back.
Right. Because, because there's been no concern raised from management. That was a council person...
Well, actually, when I had a conversation with the manager today, she had some concerns as well.
But I'm saying, that haven't, that hasn't been expressed to council, it's on the agenda for tonight, and of course, during the, you know, when we vote, there's a question, you know, call for question, the council members have, um, we voted up or down, but as far as the educating item, I'm saying, we can get that, you know, that's needed anyway.
Question?
Go ahead.
During, during these agenda items, we usually have someone from the schools that come and speak on the agenda items, usually the Superintendent or someone from finances, there, there are no ones scheduled to attend the meeting tonight for us to ask the questions?
Um, I spoke to, um, Dr. Bracy this morning to see if he or someone would be in attendance. He said he would check with his CFO. Unfortunately, both of them had conflicts and could not attend tonight, so...
Well, I, 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 I don't want to belabor the point. I, I think that we, we need the education, but it'll go to the, to the vote, and it'll be put on the floor, and we'll make the decision at that point. Thank you. Madam... So, we are in need, I think those are, uh, we now have come to City Council Liaison Reports. Are there any City Council Liaison Reports? Seeing none, then we do have a need to go into a closed session?
I have it. I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to A. Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711A.7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body specifically regarding Portsmouth Business Park LLC versus City of Portsmouth. Portsmouth Circuit Court Case Number CL 22-4327, and Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711A.3 for the purpose of discussing the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body specifically regarding 700 Crawford Street.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Councilmembers, you will now move to the City Managers' Conference for your closed session.